...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states the Constitution under God, indivisible, the liberty of the people.
Okay, the agenda, many additions or corrections, I remind you all that this is a special board meeting and not open to general topics. No? The, uh, we start with public comments, and again, those are, should be restricted to items that are specifically on this agenda.
We're good, Joe.
Wow, here's the agenda.
Our movement agenda being accepted.
Second, please. Well, we're doing the agenda first, we, I omitted the, uh, when they voted. Okay, now we're into public comments. Anyone? Okay, Joe.
I'll say my word. Do the setting of the meetings.
Yes.
It's been such a long time, it's hard to tell, but when there was most attendance at Ford, it was when they held by specific day of month at the same location, for example. The, for many years, the Ford held a work session on a Wednesday, maybe second, third Wednesday, one o'clock or something like, and then it would hold a regular meeting, say, on the third Saturday of each month in the community, and it was that fixed day, it wasn't bouncing around different times, different days, and you could make an argument for those different times and different days, I'm sure, make arguments for all this stuff, but one thing is for certain, when they were in specific times, there were 100, 200 people here, and now we're lucky, we did five. I don't know what's changed, it may be other factors that worked, but, uh, since about 2004, 2005, we haven't, haven't had regularly scheduled.
Action Joe, that's a subject discussion, very next item on the agenda, which is schedule.
I can only talk about things as well.
That's true. I know you, I know you would never do that. Okay, moving on, uh, full receipt, uh, I'm sorry, yes, leaving schedule. This is a draft schedule, uh, it, uh, it had, sort of, Michelle gave it a squawk. Thank you very much. And I only noticed that on this particular schedule, a week back, that there was one conference, Sharon, out of the country, uh, on the 29th, October 29th, moving just, uh, that. Correct.
Uh, yeah, I'm leaving the 25th, and I will be back until, like, the 21st, so this is, there's two meetings in a row that I have to do.
This could be moved to the 27th, this missed that. Um, picking up on Joe's comments, there was, uh, was, I think, two drifts that, uh, that suggest that meetings be on the same day. Um, one was Sharon, who suggested that they eat on a Thursday afternoon of the, uh, the last Thursday each month. Um, and, can't remember who else, uh, thought that that would, uh, to nothing last Thursday, question where or something. Um, and I personally think that's good, I, I agree with Joe, that if you always have it on the same day, then you probably won't want to do it more. Now, go.
I just, should we raise our hand to?
Yeah, just, just, this is a, this is a discussion.
Okay. Um, I may be the only one around this table that's still working.
Nope.
You're working too, okay, okay. A 9:00 AM meeting for me is very difficult, I just ran to the office to get your, late hour, I apologize, I'm a human slave. I have great difficulty with the 9:00. Uh, like the 3:00 o'clock meetings we did last year, I was able to get my business done and concentrate, and not have to worry about rushing back. So if we could do it in the afternoon or late afternoon, I would certainly prefer it. I do think, uh, Joe's comments are valid, however, I do think some people also work during the day and they would enjoy it, but I guess we have a couple evenings here, but I do request that we tell him almost impossible to do.
Anybody else have feelings about morning meetings?
Yeah, I would have the same, uh, comment, it's, I'm not retired, I do have, I think afternoon meetings would be best for me also, but I do agree that if we could keep it to, first of all, the last week of the month, hours for all the financials to be done in time, so that we don't have that issue, and, you know, if you stick to a Thursday and a Saturday, again, I, we've been through all of them, we've been through what, meeting, Saturday meetings, evening meetings, afternoon meetings, Joe's comment is the most specific, I think, if you can stick to a date, and God knows, I didn't always do that, mostly because I was trying to react to, but getting as many of the board members there as possible, but I do think, uh, Thursday afternoon and then some Saturdays thrown in, I don't know that any evening meetings frankly raised the level of attendance, from my experience, the years I've been. Uh, maybe others have their feelings, but I don't know.
Maybe with a late afternoon meeting, perhaps if I, 3:00 versus?
3:00, something like that.
Well, let me ask you this, Sharon, you, you have appointments at 9:00 in the morning?
Quite often, or I have to get back because of whatever, I mean, I, I'm working full time.
No, I understand that, but, uh, you know, maybe, uh, maybe I just don't understand the business, I just thought it would be probably more meaningful to you if, if they were morning meetings, because then it gives you the whole afternoon to, to show houses.
If I, if I am, don't have to be here until after 1:00, I'm better, I have multiple things, not just appointments, and, uh...
And I'm the same way with conference calls, morning is pretty well called, many days, anyway.
As I said, Mike, it's not about us, it's about membership, that's why we're doing this. I would think, I'm sure that I do, to get my picture to pay, the membership has done best, always, on Saturdays, attend, it just always worked, everybody knew the meeting was Saturday, and everybody knew it was a tent, they don't all have to be Saturday to attend, somewhere along the line though, we started reacting to, well, this board member that, that board member this.
That's the issue, when you ask, you know, for opinions, then you'll get six different opinions.
And that's right.
And by the way, I have to say, I don't have, I don't have, I can do anything.
You don't want Saturday.
I'm from, well, yeah, I'd like, like, Bob?
Uh, we went back, Michelle and I tracked attendance, September 2012 till August 14, average weekday attendance, 19.75, rounds off, so that's 19, ten, average Saturday attendance was 6.3, just counting the number of people at each, she keeps track of it.
Last two years.
From, to, September 2012 to August 2014.
When was the last time we had a regular meeting, set day, set month, the set day of the month, bang, it was way before 2012.
Yeah, actually, that's incorrect, we had a public schedule for the last four years, and unlike people who want to present it as if it was constantly, it was not.
Oh, no, there was a schedule, it wasn't this thing.
No, they were different days.
It's like the hours of the terms grant, we're open tomorrow.
The difference, the difference, the difference is mindset, Tom.
I got you. I'm all for Thursday afternoons and Saturdays, so I'm fine with it.
I don't have a problem with the day of the week.
Anybody else on Thursday afternoons and Saturdays?
I, I think Thursday works because we have our budget, everything could be into Michelle for Monday, to get a time for us to get our things in a proper order, we have weekend to work on things if we need to do something, uh, I, I just think Thursday makes a lot of sense.
Well, there are issues, of course, Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to have turkey here.
Well, we could.
We've got enough, we've got enough already.
There's seven turkeys in here.
The, uh, I don't, yeah, I don't know, but I would, I would think that, that will have set, I think we should try Saturdays, there are people specifically that, you know, now you're talking about anecdotal information, surely, but nonetheless, there should happen people to express, if they're in a meeting, to have a Saturday meet, they're, they're out of town, and they have some interest, at least we may, the afternoon, do that, I think, that's it. It's perception, perhaps.
If you looked at the schedule, Dave, and simply moved the Wednesday meetings to Thursday.
Yes.
Keep your Saturdays.
Them were pretty close.
They're pretty close.
I mean, 30% of the schedule I got is Saturday.
Yeah, there are other ones too, but, uh, they're not regular Ford.
There are six Saturday meetings, nine Wednesday.
Right.
What? Regular meetings is what you're talking about?
No, I said six.
Yeah.
Six Saturday.
Including the annual meeting, I mean, so when you're attending a meeting to the presentation of the budget, it's not important.
All the meetings, all the, but that's, that's kind of, you know, there's nothing.
The membership does attend, you're trying to give them an opportunity to participate, governs their, their membership, their association, that happens to all the meetings a year.
The budget presentation, the membership does attend on Saturday, that's meant for the public.
Yeah, yeah.
Word doesn't have to attend, but I think in the past, we all have.
The ones that aren't regular meetings, for I point out, are kind of, I mean, they're not, I mean, they're sort of up a level in terms of interest, so, well, let me see, we've, I think, we've kind of, you know, got a little consensus on Thursday as our regular.
Well, I'm confused about Thanksgiving, does that mean we have to share a Thanksgiving dinner with everybody in this room, or what, what does that mean?
No, it's gonna be.
The weekend before.
Well, wait a minute, now what, you're the guy that wanted it every Thursday.
Oh, Jack, stop, stop, stop. We'll, we'll, we'll have the, uh, Michelle will work that out, and her confidence that she can, and, uh, I wouldn't keep it all for Thanksgiving, we already know that, so we move it to the.
You move it back a day, 21st to the 20th, that's.
Oh, is it 21st?
It's on the 21st now.
No, 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 Thanksgiving is the 27th.
No, the meeting.
I'll move it. Yeah, that's right. I already took care, I already took care of Thanksgiving, I thought, I thought of that.
As long as you know I will not be here, because I'm out of the country, that's fine, but I just won't be here that.
The October one, can we move that back a week, so you don't miss two meetings in a row?
Well, yeah.
We may get the 23rd.
The 23rd, yeah.
Bearsley, the 23rd.
I had made a note of that already.
When is the October meeting scheduled now?
October 29th. Do you have this, do you have this?
Yeah, I have it on my desk, but it should be in my calendar.
So if it's the 23rd, I would appreciate that I would be there.
Not a problem, I, for anybody. Uh, for that Thursday.
Let me ask you a question, do you have a copy of the memo I sent you? Didn't I combine 17th and 29th, or suggested? I'm trying to remember why, what is on the 17th?
What month are you talking?
October, what are you talking about?
We have a special meeting on the 18th.
Special meeting on the 18th?
Special meeting on October 18th. Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, what is that?
We don't know.
What does that mean? The, uh, you know, that, that's, it's kind of a placeholder, and it doesn't have to go along the schedule, you hate placeholders, but I'm just saying that my intent is that we have a special meeting on a specific subject, the C I D, and I think it's, it's going to take a meeting by itself to go through, and, uh, now, does it have to be October, no, does it have to be that day, no, it doesn't, but sometime in that timeframe, sometime not so far, okay, that was my intent.
So we have, have we now moved that October board meeting, 23rd?
Yes, we have.
What time is it?
We haven't figured a time.
Well, we're, we're gonna work on times next, I, I kind of, again, going for different things, uh, I've got some in the morning, I've got some in the afternoon, but.
I'll acquiesce, I mean, I, it's not important, the morning, mornings are not important.
Okay, uh, I don't really care, I mean.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
But we have.
That's late.
In the afternoon?
That's 7:00.
That only impacts the 7:00, and that, that's gonna be the subject. Okay, morning, and answer your question, yes, uh, I have to write, and everybody else is writing that, yeah. Uh, and I would vote to have our, at least one half of our meetings on Saturday, not quite that, if it goes, wow.
Jeff, could we go back, the executive council meeting on a Friday at 7:00, I would suggest that chairs of committees are not gonna want to be done on Friday at evening.
7:00, even when we make cookies?
Especially, we have cookies, you know, adult beverages, I think that's a poor choice of dates for the executive council, Friday. Thursday, possibly, but Friday, I would suggest it's not a good a date.
Just move both of those to?
We're, I think we're on, that's where we're on the next one, this Friday, November 7th, if we're going in order of the meetings.
I don't have that.
Um, Michelle, do you have the extra copies of this?
Should be in your board pack.
In your board package?
Yeah, November 7th, Friday, um, there's no reason why it shouldn't be Thursday, there's nothing, there's nothing going on on the Thursday preceding, I don't know, there was a Friday meeting, at least on the schedule that I had last year, and that's why I, you know.
Okay, so executive council will be Thursday, November 6th.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense, and the November meeting, I will be out of town, and, I return the 21st.
The, uh, are we down to November 21st yet on the budget guidance?
No, the regular.
Well, it's gonna, that's gonna be Thursday, 21st.
Yeah, what I did was, I, uh, I basically combined two, uh, 21st, uh, for budget guidance and the regular.
Okay, it's up to you what you want to do, but we have provided the budget guidance much earlier in the process over the last couple of years, like September, October timeframe is when the budget, because they're already working on budget, starting in September, uh, it's up to you when you want to provide the guidance, but I, that, at least the last few years, that has been done late September, early October, from the board, Tubal and the team, that, you're, you're gonna be two months into the budget process by the time that date gets there.
Well.
It's up to you, it's up to the team.
We could move it to the, or regular, and I think you can vote.
You can, sure, sure, sure.
So, so let's eliminate, uh, that budget guidance, eliminate it, just put it up on October.
The only other question I had, Dave, was the volunteer appreciation night, we didn't even have it last year, because the yacht club wasn't open, but in previous years prior to that, we were requested to have this later in the spring, when everybody was back from trips and things like that, having it in January, you'd miss a few people, it's up to you what you want to do, it has been done in January.
Oh, it's up to everybody.
You know, I just, you put it out, so I want to.
Yeah, well, you have to have.
Yeah, I think people are in Florida in January, and weather is always iffy, I think it'd be safer to do something like.
I just thought it'd be nice in the middle of the winter to go out and, you know, drink up.
Still do that day, it's okay.
All right, then we have an official Ocean Pines drinking day on the.
Now, I, I, I don't care, if you think, if you've got feedback that says volunteer is better sometimes, okay, so, well, we could make it, I gotta have an idea, we could make the regular board meeting on 29th.
On what?
April, uh, change the time of that, you could have the board meeting, then have volunteer.
Are we moving all meetings to Thursday now instead of Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be Thursday, the 30th, I don't have a calendar.
Thursday, the 30th.
At 3:00, and then have the appreciation that night, starting at 6:00.
I'm sorry, let me call this, um, what was that time, was it Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday?
30th.
Thursday.
30th.
Move 30, okay, at what time, right?
3:00.
3:00, and appreciation is at 7:00, or?
He said 6:00, but I don't.
Midnight, midnight.
It usually starts at 6:00. It usually starts at 6:00.
I thought I, I threw that out last year. Okay, so that's, that's.
Friday, November 21st, are you changing that to Thursday, the 20th, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Till the 23rd of October.
No, she's talking about the regular meeting.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't say that, I'm sorry, November 20th, I apologize, November 20th, that is a Thursday meeting, the 20th.
Correct, and that's gonna be it, are we going with this 3:00 PM time?
Yeah, let's go with the 3:00 PM time.
As long as I'm excused, that means, is my Thursday missed?
You'll pass.
You can't hold on for that for the day.
I feel like you were out in October.
I am, I leave the 25th, I arrive back here in Ocean Pines on the 21st of November.
Uh-huh, okay.
So that's, I mean, I'm just, won't be.
Well, you're hurried.
I'm only flying for two days.
You know why, by the way, I, you know, maybe I did miss that, that may very well be why I had it on that Friday in the morning.
If it was Friday in the afternoon, I could make it, but I don't want you to make a Friday meeting just for me, so it's up to you.
I would, but I don't, yeah.
We can't move it to the 22nd, that's.
No, well, we're just talking about where I had it, it was on Friday, 21st, and, you know.
She can make, she can make.
Now, the other thought, since there is no general meeting on a Saturday in the fall.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, Marty likes Saturday meetings.
Okay. Saturday, September 22nd.
22nd.
You said there are no meetings in the fall, September 27th.
September, 27th.
October 8th is a special.
Oh, there is one in the fall, I'm, I'm, okay, I missed it.
But this answers a lot of problems, just take that Thursday meeting and make it a Saturday meeting on the 23rd.
I don't have.
Which one, are we on November?
We're on November.
November 21st.
We can't move a week forward because of Thanksgiving.
So we're gonna move it up a day.
And rather than add another day to this thought process, since we're trying to stay with Thursdays and Saturdays.
So make it a Saturday.
Saturday, 10:00. This one page, I've changed the meeting at 2:00.
All right, now, give me the date, November what?
23rd, ah, 22nd, good God, make that.
22 and the time.
10:00 AM, right?
What's the time?
I don't know, you asked for me, and I don't, I would say 10:00.
All the other times he's got down is 9:00.
9:00 AM.
That's at 9:00 AM.
That 9:00 AM is gonna look.
Okay, so this is Saturday, November 27th, regular meeting, correct.
Regular meeting.
I assume this will be about.
What do you think?
You wanna copy this down?
Michelle, you got that?
22nd at 9:00. 20th.
22nd at 9:00.
Yeah.
No, no, not at 9:00.
At 3:00 on Saturday?
Oh, no, not at 9:00. All, okay, let's make a rule, all meetings on Thursdays at 3:00, all meetings on Saturdays at 9:00.
Okay, so we sticking to Wednesday, January 7th, for budget presentation, and we're moving back right after December.
Uh, well, no, I think we agreed that it'd be on the same day as the regular.
So Thursday at 3:00.
That's, that'll be Thursday at 3:00.
I can't, confused, we're moving to Ford meeting.
No, this is the special, this is the one right after, for the budget guidance, the budget report, red, in January, here.
Moving it to the 8, or say the 8 to 3, moving it to the 8.
We're making that Thursday, January 8th.
Wow, I'm happy.
So we're making that, that, uh, 3.
3:00 PM.
8.
Oh, yeah.
Thursday, 8.
That's right, January 8th.
3:00 PM.
So, next meeting to really go and discuss is the January 28th one, which will now become January 29th, at 3:00.
That's gonna be combined with volunteer appreciation.
Well, not exactly.
Move that to April 30th.
No, we moved that, that's, that's, scratch that.
Oh, okay, I did, I did have.
Hey, by the way, it's passed over, but, um, December, yeah, I.
Week at the 12th, I'm sorry, January 12th.
Uh, December, I have special meeting against Ford, and it all feels like on, about, about the 6th, back, so, um.
You might not get back, oh.
I don't know, I'm not going to Africa.
Well, I thought you were going to South Africa.
No, I went there, done that.
So there will be no December theme unless there is a special needed, meeting needed, yeah, qualify the vice president.
Sleep in.
Yeah, okay, where are we up to, um, February? Saturday?
I'm sorry, Friday, are we reading that?
No, it's, the 29th.
That should be Thursday.
29th is the 1st.
I, I have January 30th out there.
That's right.
That is a budget guidance after we've met on the budget.
Yes.
Why don't we combine both of those meetings?
Yeah, I, I really don't see what you.
Maybe do one at 1:00 and one at 3:00, or 3:00.
Start at 3:00.
So you're gonna combine that, okay.
January 29th?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
They have to send out your pizza.
Yeah.
Somebody suggested, Sharon, suggest.
I think we're all staying with 3, and we're calling out for pizza, okay, so, we've done that more than once, okay.
My head, practice your choir on us. Okay, we're.
Well, that's good, that's it for the holidays.
What?
All right, where are we up?
Saturday.
February 7th, which is budget guidance, actually, Bob, you present that, that's it, right?
Present.
All right. All right. 21st.
What's that?
Regular board meeting.
On Saturday, Marty.
Good, good. That's Washington's birthday week.
I'm sorry, Saturday, February 7th, does that belong?
21st.
That's February 7th.
Both of those Saturday meetings stay that.
Point first, for later. Is that going up here? Uh, no, both, this one, this one moves up. Seven stays. Seven stays and then point first.
And the 27th, Friday.
That's a fine, do you wanna move it to Thursday?
That's just what he said, yeah, 26 to 3.
We're gonna have, do we, in the past, we've had a special meeting approved of the budget, it's not even, for another 40 days. Approved, I mean, is that necessary?
I don't know, I didn't make this stuff up.
I'm sure you did, but, you know, sometimes if you're in a rut, you gotta.
The budget has to be approved 45 days before the beginning of the next fiscal year.
That would be when?
So you back it up.
The 16th of March.
The middle of March, yeah. Doesn't have to be that.
When do, when do we do it last year, that was pretty smooth, one day.
That's how we do it last year.
No, then, what was the date?
I don't remember, but it was.
Was it around the time, like the end of?
It was like the first week of March or something.
Yes, the end of, end of February, first of March.
The end of February 1st of March is what we did last year, this is a special meeting.
Yeah, Bob, Bob has a good point. Can we move the 26th up to the 1st?
That was also in my email.
Why with me?
Why not?
Last year was Saturday, the 22nd, which is a big board meeting, final approval of the budget.
Last year.
We just eliminated it, praise Jesus.
Move it to Saturday, the 23rd. Well, leaving in, but put the dates in, just remember what we.
Maybe, if it, if it comes unspool, we'll schedule a special meeting then.
So the final approval of budget is done on the 21st.
Commissioners there?
That works.
It's, yeah, it's only, you know, you gotta make yours.
When do we make a presentation to the county?
Because their calendars, the bigger issue.
No, 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 for their budget, is it that late? So we meet before, and then do the presentation.
Not today.
So what is that date?
Commissioner?
10th of the day, yeah.
March 19th. Thursday. 6pm. Okay. Followed by a regular meeting on Saturday. Boy, these people better show up. Yeah, Marty.
You started it.
We're certainly giving them an opportunity.
It's weekend. Okay, we'll give them. Yeah, Thursday, April 30th. Friday, April 20th.
Thursday, April 30th. 3 o'clock, regular work, 6, 6 o'clock, appreciation.
Appreciation. Friday, April 24th, uh.
Lose that back a day or?
Is that May?
April, April 43rd.
April is the 30th.
Yeah, but the, all right, you had a, you have Thursday, April 30th, 3 o'clock, 6 o'clock.
Right.
But we're gonna back up Thursday, April 23rd, so it's just Friday then?
For the executive council.
Oh, yeah.
6, 7 o'clock. So we'll do the next week, we'll have 6. And 7, for the executive council, 6 for appreciation.
Uh, yes, does anyone think that's crap?
No, we've all, we've done it the last couple years and stuff.
We worked for you well, so that's up. Okay, so now we've got Thursday, 28th, May 28th.
I don't have a calendar, when is Memorial Day? I don't have a calendar.
9th, 30th, 31st.
So it's the Thursday before Memorial?
No, Memorial Day's the 25th.
What's the 25th? Okay, so it's the Thursday after.
And then the same thing. Gotta move that 3 o'clock. Yeah, everything, yeah, we made a general, everything that was 9 o'clock is up.
Can you give me the date?
Thursday, June 25th.
There, man, I'll check. Cause that's not a general attendance meeting. Yeah, Wednesday, July 29th, regular meeting.
Can you back up the meeting before on this Thursday, the July 16th, GM contract view, is that at 4:30, keep it to 4:30 time?
We can keep it to Thursday, it's Wednesday, and we can make it Thursday on, so you all remember. But, but it's not a general attendance meeting.
Now, which, which date is that?
The first, uh, it's along.
First on the top of the second page.
He's not looking at that.
It's Wednesday, right now, it's Wednesday, July 15th, yeah.
Why wouldn't we just move that question, the 30th is a regular meeting?
Because I think it's going to require a, uh, special meeting, this is general managers' contract we do.
I, I agree, I agree with that.
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a closed session.
Yeah, but you need a closed session.
And we don't, and nobody else is coming, so.
So we're still keeping it for 30, is that what you want?
Wednesday, the 22nd.
No.
No, Wednesday's the 16th.
You keeping it on Wednesday?
All right, Marty, Wednesday is a 5, you move it to Thursday, you're leaving it to Wednesday.
Thursday.
Let's move it to Thursday.
Thursday to 16th.
So we won't.
8pm.
So sometime next year.
Now, let everybody know, that's my birthday, so I want a big cake, lots of candy.
Is your birthday?
Yes. At what time now?
I'll bring you cake, you'll be scotched.
Why 4:30? 4 o'clock?
I put 3, why change a good thing, I mean, why?
One vote, birthday.
Then you get out in time to go to the.
3 o'clock, and then we'll have time, cake, candy.
Burn this place down.
Are you gonna have a clown, or I'm not gonna?
I could say something. Whoa, I bite my tongue. Yeah, we could.
I'm shocked that someone didn't jump on.
July 29th, uh.
Thursday.
Do we still want that at 7?
No, it's 3.
3 o'clock.
Bobby, you walked right into that, go, you did.
Okay, and then the annual meetings, when the annual meeting is.
Michelle, I hope you got that.
Michelle, we got this, we got this pretty much about perfecting. We nailed it.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Okay.
Annual meeting is the 8th on the Saturday.
Yes, it is. Okay, are we done with the, uh, the, the shells, extreme?
I'd like to change all the Thursdays to Wednesdays.
What's the next meeting date?
Next, that's a good question, it is Thursday. Saturday, September 27th.
September 27th?
27th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. The A is honest, I guess. Okay, there's been some, there has been some modifications, I put out that first one, but it doesn't matter. Got Aquatics, Sharon. I mean, just pop up and say no.
Oh, I'm fine, no, no, no.
Say no, yes.
Ginny, okay, no, 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 is it okay for me to be your liaison?
Yes.
Okay, uh, A R C, Terry.
Good.
Uh, Budget and Finance, Jack. By Louis, I'll put myself, that. Clubs, Bill, okay with you. Uh, Communications, Marty. Uh, Competency Planning, Pat. I'm gonna, uh, per, panel commissioner is not really an official thing, Bill says he's unlikely to make. And, uh, I think, rather than assign a specific person, uh, might try.
Well, I'd like to remain.
Well, you're on, yeah.
And, and I would open the invitation, like, you know, Bill and I, we're opening it to anybody who wants to go down and give me a call, or if you wanna go down on a regular basis, we'll share the ride, if you, you know, don't have to babysit one particular day, cause I know you enjoyed that, just give me a call, we'll go down together, it's not a problem. He'll get tired of it, oh, yeah, he'll get enough of it.
Good job, good job, August.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll do that.
Okay, Elections, Pat, yeah, Secretary, Environmental, Marty. Uh, Golf Council, this is not an official, they're not advising, not before Marty says it, we know it, but nonetheless, I personally think it's worthwhile to have a presence.
Well, are we gonna have a golf advisory committee, since if you have a resolution, it's a bona fide committee, would you have one, or just not have?
Well, no discussion, no, uh.
I thought we were discussing liaison assignments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but not whether or not we have a committee.
We have a committee.
Yeah, we don't have.
We even need to assign a liaison to it or?
Oh, we are, we're assigning Jack Collins.
That's not the committee, I'm sorry, it's not.
Okay.
It's not picky, it's actual.
I already said it wasn't a committee, I said it's the Golf Council, and it's worthwhile to have a presence at the Golf.
Don't argue that way.
And Jack is gonna be that presence, okay, now, the next question, do we have an advisory, last time I was on there, I, uh, did away with golf advisory, and, um, and, well, you're saying, but show me one person that's on it.
Well, yeah.
Oh, I'm not gonna show you anything, I'm just telling you that there's a bona fide committee, like, there's a resolution for.
Since resolutions, there's nobody in it, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, there's nobody.
So bodies, yeah.
They may not have told.
Well, you know, this particular group may opt one day to do that.
There was a point.
I think they opted to not do that.
They may opt to not do that.
It was a long time ago, they, they haven't been an official advisory committee for the last four years, definitely, they shouldn't be. Pete, Pete Comsec may, like.
That wasn't around at that point, it does work.
Yeah, so it, it was, there was a motion, and, yes, I do not have the golf advisory committee, or that, I don't know.
Really?
Expended it, yeah, I saw it somewhere, whether it was expended or something, so, yeah, it's been.
But it is still in the resolutions, uh, they.
Well, I don't doubt that. We could.
We gotta straighten out.
We could advise it.
There's a golf advisory committee on the O P A website.
Yeah, I don't doubt that.
That's right.
Okay.
That's the last time I agree with, that's right.
The marine activities, uh, Bill? Rock and sports, huh?
Yep.
Rock and parks. That's good, okay, we're all good. Okay, next topic for discussion is mine, reporting for, not that.
Actually, it's discussion orientation.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
All right, there were two, if you recall, at the meeting a couple weeks ago, we talked about having the board orientation meeting, same thing we did last year by beneficial, uh, two dates I wanna throw at you, uh, September 18th and 19th. And the alternative dates are 1st and 2nd of October, which I think may be better, these were submitted yesterday, uh, with a couple folks being announced.
Did you pick September 18th, was it your first one?
Well, that's why I'm trying to move it to the first and second.
I agree.
I've got a doctor's appointment.
I can't do the 18th and 19th.
Uh, let me ask the first question, I guess, about the orientation, I mean. In the past, the orientation meeting, well, like, I remember, yeah, and in some cases, it's just an amp. And, uh, so the question is, does it really require two days? I don't know, I wasn't here last year, so.
Oh, Dave, I, if I may speak, first year I was on, I didn't have any orientation, last year, Bob, had a orientation meeting, and that was my second year on the board, it was two days, and it was two very valuable days, first of all, we, I learned things, even though I had forty, I didn't realize. Secondly, it was kind of a melding together, we did talk about some things, and say, oh, gee, maybe we should look at this, or whatever, but I thought it was very valuable. And then we ended up the tour of the facilities, which I think Bill will agree, that was an excellent thing that we did, because when we went to actually saw all these facilities, we had to see, we have issue here, this is really doing great, or this is an improvement, or we need to consider this when the budget's coming up next year, so it was really an eye opener for me, that tour of the facilities. I, I think the two days were valuable, I think we met till two or three, I mean, it wasn't like till season.
We had, yeah, in the past, tour of the facility was part of the session, uh.
Weren't we actually three days, and two and a half days was in instruction, and then the second, the second half and the third day?
It's a day and a half between, and it, Paul finished off the second day about midday, had some lunch, and then had a court facility, so. It's about a day and a half, but with your legal counsel, or your accounting, I mean, there are a number of folks who bring in to, so, you know.
Did you look into that C A I? What is that?
Oh, I don't have the board's dates, you said join C A I, which were.
No, there's a, they have a board orientation class.
You took that two years ago.
Yeah, and I think it's in the, but I don't. I mean, that really does, 30% of, yeah, class.
But this is specific to Ocean Pines, which I think was about, and, and.
I think that hurts us, we oughta be specific to the job, not.
Well, I will disagree on that, Marty, but Bob brought some of the head of the departments in, so he can ask questions about things, and brought in our lead counsel, so he'd be sure we understood all bylaws and regulations, and it made it very clear, so I think what Bob did was an excellent, excellent.
I'm not saying it wasn't great, rah, rah, rah.
There's, there's, you're, we're talking about two different things, I mean, I'm very, let's see that, I have been involved in a lot, uh, every, first time we moved the park and, uh, and, uh, and we have people, I mean, both perspectives, so. But it's, it's at a broader level than obviously it has to be at a level, because it covers all kinds of associations, or, so. So it's gen, let's put, let me call that one the general principles, pretty. because it covers all kinds of associations, or, so, so it's gen, let's put, let me call that one the general principles, pretty, uh, whereas, you know, the, well, assuming this only is a, closer to specific issues, uh, uh, they both fit together, there's, you know, one's not better than, uh, the other. So I would suggest that you find out, uh, what the dates are, get that out. And, uh, I, 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 uh, what, I ran out. I have good sticks, and I, I would suggest that everybody, they succeed from problems.
I cannot do it weekly, but the first and second, I can.
First and second, first and second, I can.
All right, thank you, okay, second, I'm just guessing, yeah.
I'm guessing, but, yeah. I, I think I'm okay, I, I mean, yeah, I think.
Okay, kind of first and second, anybody has, don't get that, that's out, no problem. Nor is it necessary for everybody, and, uh, everybody's had orientation, okay, that's.
I don't wanna trip around the golf course, I promise.
I get, I mean, you're gonna get that, that's a personal truth, now, around golf course.
We've already been in this one.
By Dave, by Dave Stevens, first and second, I remember it, golf course.
Until October.
Okay, is that all right?
Sure.
All right, we're good, okay. Board meetings. A lot of the, uh, talk about the schedule, uh, general, about time, I think, but, uh, I am gonna propose, uh, to make a motion, uh, to follow these type of procedures, uh, for reporting in, uh, in time of report. Basically, the objective, uh, I have those five votes, I can beat them, is to make formal decisions. When we sit here and we have to decide, we have to know, have the information possible about what we're deciding.
In advance, so.
Well, we have to have it, we have to have it when we're making the decisions, which means sometimes, for what's, yes, I agree, that's about the fact. Facilitate member understanding of the issues being discussed. I mean, I think it's just as important that the members who are sitting here understand what we're talking about. Uh, focus on issues that require board decisions or actions, and I think, again, if there's no action, if there's no decision, then we have to question why it is, is it perhaps, you know? There may be another reason, it could be for information purposes, but I think we have to look a lot harder. Provide continuity from meeting to meeting, another issue, um, if something happens at the end, we want to be able to remember that, carry it over to the next, and reduce the duration, that's pretty obvious. So, I mean.
I don't know, I'll check my mailbox where it fits, isn't it?
It was in your board packet.
It should have been, it was in the gray, did you get your gray box?
I, was that in the gray box?
Yeah.
Product. All right, meeting materials, all motions, discussion topics, reports, presentations, and supporting material shall be provided to the board in the board packet at least three days prior to the, to the extent possible, these materials shall also be made available to members of the, uh, members of, uh, have a very minimum, they should be made available, uh, as handouts on the day.
Yeah, not just to the media, but to the, the attending public.
Well, I, I think, I think.
To the members and the media.
We're, we're, we're reasonable, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one way, yeah, but the other way is, uh.
Website.
Uh, the website, I don't want, I just want to get the idea of the situation. You're not real specific. Presentations and reports.
Will you, you want reactions to, as you move?
Absolutely.
Section by section, okay.
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
When it comes to the materials, I just want to make sure we're clear here, that if we're, C P I jumps to mind. All motions having to be written up in advance, meaning somebody's gonna have to write a motion for the C P I actions that Bob brings to the board look at. Materials are in your, in, in the built board packet, so we would have to get the C P I materials, I, I'm just trying to work through this, because then you'd have to get the C P I, you'd have to get the C P I materials for us to look at it prior to the board packages going out, so that the motions would be in the board packets. So a C P I exempt from the three-day notice as part of the process? Because otherwise, the C P I stuff's gonna have to be in our box like week in advance, because someone, probably myself, being the art liaison, would have to write the motions. Not that I'm against doing that, but I mean, if that's what we want to do, then that's one that we have to have that work done prior to the board packets going out. So the motions can be written, or are C P I exempted?
I, I, I'm not gonna say that, but, uh, and I believe it is. I think we have to work, this is going on all the time, I think we have to work on C P I processes and procedures.
That's fine.
To that extent, I think that might be exempt, because they, in other words, I'm not concerned about the motion. I mean, basically, what we're concerned about is the information that we're gonna decide on, and that's what you want in advance, preferably.
No, I'm just, not trying to, I'm just reacting to the words as I read, it said all motions need to be in the board packets, written up, so they go in the board package three days prior to the meeting, that would require that to be done. The same thing when it comes to purchasing, motions to purchase vehicles based on the budget. I'm assuming Jack would have the responsibility of writing the motions for the procurement that Bob would be presenting to us for us to okay.
That would be so that we would know three days in advance what it is.
I have no problem with that, I'm just trying to make sure I understand that, that we all know what we're gonna need to do in order to live up.
It's, it's difficult, but again.
Most things are doable, I just want to make sure we understand that what at least two of us are gonna have to be doing.
Yeah.
To make this work.
What were you talking about? C, C, C P I, the package tells you what you're going. Now, Bob doesn't do a motion, but he does do a presentation and ask for a release card.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any surprises there.
No.
We have to have that package well before the meeting.
I understand that.
We need to look at.
By the way, this does not, uh, supersede bylaws or, uh, or Roberts rules. I mean, you can still make motions at the meeting.
That was my question.
And that, that's exactly true.
Yeah, that, that goes without saying, yeah, you can do that.
And I think you're right, C P I items do fit, the motions fit, but the materials that support the motion should be, uh, given out in advance.
And the same for procurement, just, Bob, again, I guess, really can't make the motion, but he's making a recommendation of a lease card. We know that a week in advance.
Somebody at the meeting can make the motion, and it will just, you know, just go.
So what you're saying, then, all motions do not have to be, uh, hands three days in advance, as much as possible, but we are allowed to make motions at the meeting? Is this saying all motions, discussion topics, reports, presentations, and supporting materials shall be provided at these three days prior to the meeting? I have a problem, because I think there are cases just like what we're talking about, things come up, and we need to have a discussion, and if a motion is proposed, it may not be what we really want to do after we've discussed it.
Yeah.
Then it fails.
But then we can't have another motion submitted, because it hasn't been presented three days in advance.
That's not true, Roberts rules, which is dictating.
That's why I want a clarification from the President, that's what I'm asking.
I think the, the clarification is that motions still can be made at, as, as per, I think, just name a couple of cases where they are. In other words, the material that will support the decision is what's important, not the motion itself. Motion itself is just an administrative thing that they put forward, so, you know, it would almost be easy enough to do, but never forget that. There will be other cases, motions of that nature will be brought up. But what's inappropriate, though, is to make a motion on a significant decision, where all the information is defined, and where the board, uh, basically is making up its mind about that. And, as I've seen many times in the past, where the motion is just scribbled down, and at the end of it, Bob, you've seen this too, and then somebody says, well, did anybody write that down? It's important.
Roberts rules, it's gotta be written, yeah.
Gotta be written, yeah.
Why don't the board read its own resolution on September twenty?
Well, I have read it about five times.
That's what Chair has to go.
Uh, the, uh, okay, presentations and reports.
Like, the first sentence in here, I want to make sure that, those proposed for inclusion on the agenda shall be approved by the board in advance. You're not proposing that agenda items need to be accepted by the board to be on the agenda. What does that, because this reads like I've gotta submit, uh, a motion to the board to accept it in advance of it going on the agenda. I don't think that's what you meant, but.
No, but.
The approved by the board is what I'm asking about.
Yeah, no, there's not a formal vote that's made on that. Right now, the agenda, uh, profits of the secretary, the president, correct? And what I intend, uh, there will be, uh, let's say, presentations that will have one of the dates. In, in general, we could have any number of people want to present things to, if not, but it's still a board meeting, and you have to try and focus in on what it is, what is important. So, yeah, I will try and get a sense, and I think I already have that sense of what really, uh, really wants. I mean, you could get a presentation, I mean, this has happened before in the past, and, uh, basically, it's trying to, we're, so, I think, for that matter, that people outside of the association who have wanted to, uh, give presentations. And I think that you have to get a sense of, of whether or not we want to hear those. I think it's our time, it's diverting from others.
Can I shorten that paragraph?
Sure.
No surprises, that's all I think you're trying to say, no surprise.
Yes.
You know, the last couple of years, no surprise.
Well, you know, Tom's very well, Tom's quite right, that, that I say a little bit more than that, it's like a two-fold thing. No surprises is definitely the first.
Correct.
But the second thing is, do we really want to hear it? And that's, that definitely can and will come up. I mean, is it appropriate at this time, uh, to get a presentation?
But let's just, I just want to make sure that we're in agreement on one thing. If a member of this board of directors wants to bring a topic to the agenda of this board of directors, they have the right to do it.
Yes, they do.
Okay, as long as we're all in agreement with them, I'm good, okay.
And I think, though, that, well, I follow that second sentence, those submitted by a member shall have the board's response.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, uh, same thing.
The rest of this, I was, just that approved by the board part, it was kind of, I raised my hand, what does that mean?
Okay, the second part, first, the general managers, I want to go back something here. Just written reports, uh, written reports given to us in advance, uh, suggested topics, and, uh, just think, just curious about, given to you in advance, for the date of the event. We, um, if you have a special topic that requires a presentation, those shall not require presentations. If you have one, it does require a presentation, please report detail for some reason, that should be, uh, in advance, and it should be put on the agenda as a second topic, not as part of the general manager's presentation.
To clarify that, um, for my behalf, if we need a vote for a budget item, the lease card, as I mentioned earlier, where, where does that go?
Separate item, separate item, yeah, listed. Now, you might combine things, you're not gonna necessarily put an agenda item for a lease, for your, or, or it could be a, uh, an agenda item, a broad topic of procurement purchases, and, uh, and bullets underneath. And again, that might be able to put it in an average, or maybe just forget about presentation.
Well, I guess, to clarify, right, if, if needed, at least you're involved, it's, uh, with this staff, who has the spot for that, wow.
No, this is, I, I said liaisons of committees and members, not the general.
In that case, I would think that would be that, because it's financial.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was looking.
But anybody.
Anybody can do it.
But it will now be a separate bullet item, for example, procurement request, that, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, so, I mean, fundamentally, no surprises, I mean, there's too much buried, some, you know, you have a general manager's report, you know, now a presentation, and you don't know what's in the presentation, it's, it's not well prepared, it's, and that's what I'm finding. Financial reports, yeah, here's, well, before I skip over to the general managers, um, basically, I'm, well, I've given you all the examples, so I think it's real clear.
So basically, then the general manager will not make a report except for any procurement request that he gets, or specific things he needs ordered vice versa.
We will have a spot on the agenda, the general managers, as would be that. We will have had in advance a narrative report, such as.
Which he will not read or present.
We will start at the beginning, we can start at the beginning, well, several, I mean, he can, we can start at the beginning, he can say, are there any questions on specific, or he can start down and say golf, and not necessarily read the report, uh, basically get, or he can say golf, any questions on that, and it will, okay, it should, he can also, as he goes down into parks and rent, he can also make specific points that might be not, say, wait a second, you know, I, not wait a second, but, but also, I want to bring up this, this, this. I mean, we're not trying to slow down or, uh, produce amount of information for, uh, yes, and I've, I've been on boards for three years for this golf, and never was a mission, never, and, by the way, I mean, what's the reason for doing it? It's fast, it's faster and zeros on in on the information that we need.
And also, I'm just looking back, these presentations, some of them are really great, but the February twenty-second meeting, we had four pages, four pages of the general manager, where they dealt with Manklin Meadows tennis, we never saw it until the meeting. It's really hard to be prepared at the meeting to discuss, I mean, then we're, what we're relying on is what we're hearing, and we can't do our due diligence. I mean, I want to see the stuff in advance, job, and otherwise, why are we here?
Well, I guess sometimes it's gonna happen, Bob's supervision, where there's some.
Or there's emergencies.
You know, we had, we had the three groups all agree to one thing, in a dependent situation, and all of a sudden, a monkey wrench is thrown in. Now, that might have happened after, three days after we put the report out, but I think in that, for instance, he has to have a fight to go and say, hey, I'm sorry, my report says this, but.
And, and if, if that should be the. And, and if, if that should be the case, uh, you know, certain, ask Bob, their very conditions, and narrative sheets, and say, yeah, this, this, and this. And that would have happened in that period since we've had the, it's not hard. I'm talking about common sense here, really. The.
The idea that there not be a, it's specifically written, that there not be a presentation by the GM, or it's not required, um, you know, I've served on boards at executive levels as well, and I've never served on one or served, worked with or in a corporation that didn't have PowerPoint presentations to executives, that were overviews of what was going on.
By the CEO?
Yes.
By the GM?
Yeah.
No, by specialists within the individual corporation that focused in that particular area, where they brought that expertise to the level, where they brought that expertise to the level of the board. And it was done in a form of information in order for the board to be aware of what's coming down the road in the future, not necessarily for a decision that has to be made that particular day.
Arguing that.
Wow, I don't know what board you served on, but, you know, I'll tell you what, if, if you're saying that critical issues are brought to a board for a board to make a decision that day, I, I would say that that corporation had our time getting the decision done. Based on my experience, Tom, you know, I'm waiting for you.
Obviously, I'm referring to the sentence that says, a presentation by the GM is not. I'm simply reporting that my experience has been that you get an overview of what's going on in the community from the guy who's running it day to day. Doesn't mean, and this goes back to at the top of the document, where the reference is made, that we only talk about things that we need to make decisions. You are correct. Over the last few years, we have had general discussions at the board level to have a sense of what was going on in the community, that did not end with a motion for us voting yes or no on something. You're correct, we did. And there was a purpose behind it, so that the board of directors would have a sense of what's going on in the community. I'm not against the write-up, it's a good idea, I'm not against that at all. I'm simply saying to flat-out say, there's no presentation from the general manager on the state of the nation of what's going on.
He didn't say that, he says, the presentation's not required. Maybe everything he has to say is right here. We've read it, we understood it, we can ask questions of him.
And, and, and that becomes, that becomes a presentation in and of itself, Tom.
You've got my feedback.
Oh, no, that's all right.
Obviously Verizon's a failure.
I didn't expect.
It's got nothing to do with Verizon.
I know what's been happening, uh, and I've been on the, a good portion of years, I perfectly understand that this is, I try, and, and, but it's not something that I just pulled out of the head, it's something that, in fact, that, or, I guess, successfully. I think it is correcting several issues, uh, and several problems. And in terms of, by the way, getting a general state of the community, which you may not be able to get from this, it's a very narrative, I would suggest that that's not what they're, we're there, we're there to look at specific information, at specific discussions, which will lead to some point to specific actions. And I think if we focus on, we will get more things done and we'll spend less time doing it, that's what I think. And I'm suggesting, no, try it.
Fair enough.
Okay.
My concern is, okay, I'm fine with the written report, I think that, that's a good start, an absolute start. But my also concern is that we've got people in OPA TV land who are listening to this on their website, uh, or listening to it on live TV, and they don't have the benefit of this written report in front of them. So how, how do you propose that we get this information out to them? The aquatics committee just did this, or the recreation department just got the support of the police department, or we're the best, safest city, and, I mean, how do they get this information? Just tell me how, how this is going to get to them.
General manager's report distributed to the media as well as possible, three days in advance. It'll be published on the website and it'll be available at the door when, I mean, everybody gets the PowerPoint.
So Bob cannot make any comments that are not written down here, is that what you're saying?
A matter of fact, I just said the opposite of that, and I thought.
I guess I didn't.
Well, what I said was, obviously, as you go down this, Bob may say, look, here's something I need to add in this paragraph, but we'll be looking at paragraphs, we'll look at it and say, okay, and here's, here's what I need to add. And as you go down further, we may say, hey, well, wait a second, what about this? We'll ask, be a question and answer, it's not, but the point is, we're interacting, problem with a presentation, not Bob's presentation, but not Bob's any, uh, presentation, is that it's, content is controlled, the content of pace is pretty much controlled by the person that's giving it. And moreover, comments that are made by the presenter or, uh, just during the presentation are not, uh, basically written down and, and, and copied. So, you know, basically, how many times do we have to go back, would we, to find out what happened by looking at the videos? A lot of times, a lot of times, we've all probably done it, and we all have it. So, it is a suggestion, but I understand.
Dave, as far as I'm concerned, we want to do this, every board decides how it wants to function. If you guys want to function this way.
Not we guys, no, we're all gonna, we're all gonna.
It's pretty obvious where this is going, okay? So I'm saying, I'll support it, let's see what happens.
Okay.
It's fine, as long as, I just, as long as we've got some clarifications of agenda items and things.
Let me move down to the financial reports. Now, this is something we've already discussed by email, uh, and this is, uh, the.
Is there a presentation on this, or is it simply the financials are made of it?
Quarterly financial reports are generally given in the form of a presentation, but, but they wouldn't be part of the general manager's report, that would be his second item.
And who will be making that report, the treasurer?
Moreover, uh, the monthly, uh, monthlies, uh, probably not.
So who's doing the, so who's doing the quarterly financial report, is that the treasurer?
You're getting them from a part.
Yeah, it's not a matter. My preference.
I'm sorry, I think you just said he's making a presentation.
My preference, your karma, but I'm going to leave that, Bob.
So there is a presentation quarterly to go over the numbers for us to talk about?
They are required, they're required, yeah. However, you're missing the other point, which I'll be posting on the L P, we haven't done. And I started, and when I was asked the question, I just couldn't think of a reason.
Here, if I chime in and make a little exception, uh, the, the, out of courtesy for board members who immediately get asked questions, or immediately, or expect no information, when the financials come out, I've held off sharing it with anyone other than board members for the first one, two, three days, depending on the board. It's just out of courtesy for the board. If the board doesn't want that courtesy, it's just easy for me to put it up. My whole thing, and I've never worked anywhere where the board has, has not been given information a little ahead of time so they can get their arms around before they're asked by, by membership, you know, explain this, or what about that? So my intent of a, a couple-day delay was a professional courtesy. If that's not needed at this point, it's just easy for me, one way or the other. The report's the report, no matter who gets it and when they get it. But it just gave you all a, a couple days heads up to get ahead of it, if there are any questions or concerns on membership.
Yeah, the screaming could start early, if, uh, I mean, I, I understand that feeling of, and I agree with that, but personally, I don't mind telling somebody I haven't, you know, I just don't know because I haven't read the report yet, and I don't mind. But on the other hand, I also don't mind the Philton delay being posted on the website. We're still getting it on the website so that everybody can see it.
Well, this says the same time, so.
Yeah, same time, I didn't propose anything else. There's no reason, anybody in this room, or somebody sitting over tailors having a beer right now, is just as entitled as I am.
Again, Marty wasn't here, just to clarify, I, I told them I delayed it for a couple days, as a professional courtesy to board members, that was the only reason.
I understand that, I, I don't think it's necessary, I, I've got five or six years on, I don't remember the first phone call, anybody catching me short on the number.
Well, that's because, because nobody, nobody has been getting the numbers in for a report, including.
That's not correct, that's not even close to being right.
No, I, we've always had.
It's not even close to being right, David.
Well, that is not quite true, we've had two meetings this year where there've been that.
But as soon as the reports have been available, Marty, you get an email from Michelle, and it's, they're, they're here, I mean, she's within minutes of her receipt.
Can I ask, can I ask, let's, let's push this down into, this is a question, I mean, I have no problem at all building that, you know, one day delay, that people really feel something, and the Marty would object to it, but, you know, it's just, doesn't make that much difference. I, as long as, but the number, right now, the numbers aren't there a period.
They're not there as of today.
They're not there as of today.
I have one more point.
They're not due today.
No, 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 no.
Last month's number.
Last month's numbers, most people are involved or not. So that's the change.
Or, or you're talking about them being on the webpage, that's correct. I agree, I'd put them up, but.
Okay, and, and if Bob wants to put in a, a one day delay, get them to the board first, and then a day later, you know, make them available or put them on webpage.
And we can do it any way the board wants.
Well, I am, I am satisfied to write that into this, but to save, to, to have that app.
It doesn't?
Yeah.
Jack, you're the treasurer, what do you say?
Well, I think that the important thing that we're trying to accomplish is informing the membership as to what is happening in terms of the numbers, in terms of progress, terms of the finances of the, of the organization. And I appreciate Bob's point, in that he's trying to be courteous to a bunch of, to a bunch of people, board members, and indicating that he's, you know, holding it back until they see it and they review it, and then he gets it out. However, um, I also agree with David that it is in the best interest, most people within this community, put that information out to the public. And the best way to do that, that we know, is through the website. And as far as the timing is concerned, I leave it up to the, you know, the organization as far as Bob is concerned, and the president as far as how he feels comfortable in, in allowing that information to be posted on a timely basis, and that's all. He's probably trying to be convenient to you, Bob, I mean, he's probably trying to not put pressure on you and the, you know, the many jobs that you have, but, but, but the Bob.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Well, it doesn't matter.
No, it wasn't being rude, I'm.
That's okay, that's okay. I think he's trying to be accommodating to Bob, and that's what I'm trying to say.
I'm actually, I'm not, Jack, no, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying, I am not trying to be unaccommodating.
No, no, I understand.
But I, what I am trying to do is make point.
Moving along.
Put in a day delay.
Yeah, put in.
I agree with Marty.
Okay, we do understand that.
How many people are going to call you up?
You can build a day delay.
Is that official policy?
No.
Not yet.
There will be.
The board voting on it?
Yes. I think, I think the vote is called for, given the amount of discussion.
It is on the next page.
And it is on the next page. Oh, yeah, the last thing, but it gets one of the members' actions. Um, at, at the end of each.
Are we getting number five? Back over to me, you missed five.
Public comments, okay. Yeah, yeah, right. Per board resolution B O two, these shall be limited to five minutes, and, uh, and directed to the chair, that's a rule, believe it or not. And rules of decorum apply, this over to the end, board members and GM may respond quest for information, but shall not engage.
To that point, Dave, we go to, and I have no problem with this, that we're in a turn to you, that it's okay for us to respond to someone at that point.
I'm not, yeah.
You're not, okay.
I mean, and, and as long as it's information exchanging, it's, it's fine. But, you know, in the heat of battle, yeah, you know.
I know, yeah, I know what you're talking.
So.
So it's going to flow through the chair?
It should flow through the chair.
Can we get another timer like you said?
I've got one right on my cell phone, I wonder, it's a wonderful thing, I can't space.
I got a little picture for.
That's what, that's what Phyllis used to do.
The hourglass.
Yeah, Phyllis, yeah, Phyllis.
She did, she had a class system right now.
Action items, at the end of each meeting, board secretary will do any actions as you can. The secretary will maintain a pending action list as you can, as you shall action, you know, really, the, and, and will maintain a pending action list, use setting of the agenda for the committee's reporting. So in other words, talk about some, say, okay, we will agree, we want this, or we'll do this, we shall, and prefer by a specific date, but not always by a specific, sometimes are, if you get pinned down, doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Point is, that it is not a, not a list. Now, what we've done in the past, yeah, and it was kind of ugly, as I recall, is that we, uh, we go down, that pending action list, the support of every meeting, and, uh, it took a whole time, I don't, I don't know if it ended, I'm, I'm not sure that, uh, somebody could bring it up, uh, but, this is heavy on us here. On the other hand, uh, it might be used to, uh, as an, uh, for your general manager's report, say, hey, by the way, you did a thing on that, and, uh, yeah, and you know what, maybe just a, 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 or, or, which is, okay. Okay, now, it's difficult, we've got a lot of comments on this, and there are some things in here that are, you know, questions such as the word oral motions, and I would.
Whenever possible, as much as, as, as invented.
No, one, one.
Can I save some time here as a suggestion?
Yeah.
Why don't you reword, rework the first page and the top of the second, if there's any changes at all from all this discussion? If everybody agrees, you send it out and we electronically vote on it, that way you've got a written document that's updated as opposed to sitting here trying to.
Sure.
Word smith every word.
Would anybody, and if you want to send some written comments or anything like that, yeah.
Do something for your pending action list, yeah?
That's exactly, I hope you got that, Sharon.
Stephen, the last, second to last paragraph, third line down, if the members have an absolute right to attend the material, I think they have a typo, or you missed a word, or the wrong word is there.
Yeah.
Attend the meeting.
I think it's probably received.
Uh, they have the right to, the material's necessary to understand what's being discussed. All I know is that sentence doesn't make sense.
And where are, where are you?
Third line from the bottom, in the second paragraph, under the discussion.
If the members have an absolute right to attend the meeting.
It should say meeting, that's what I thought, okay.
Then they have the right to.
And get the word material out, the meeting instead of material, okay.
Right, right. Yeah, and that's.
So if you would get that done and revised, I think that would be helpful, thank you.
I'm not looking for something that's going to all change overnight or anything like that, I just, it's the right thing to do. Anyway, okay, we have an action out of that. And we move on to Jenny Reister.
She's over here.
Oh, there she is.
If I may introduce Jenny, um, I am liaison to the aquatics committee at the committee's committee, so we know a lot of research.
Such pleasure.
A lot of good work, so Jenny, I want to thank you for coming, and any other members of our committee here, Tom's here. And any other members of our committee here, Tom's here.
John, of course. Thank you, John, looking right at you. Ugh, I'm sorry. They have made this report, which I have sent out to all the previous board, and then resented again, so the members have the benefit of looking at this report in advance.
And Jenny would like to give a report, because she is truly an expert of aquatics. So Jenny, would you like to come up here? You want to sit at the table, what would you prefer to do?
Be more comfortable and spread out.
Would you like to sit here, or would you prefer to stand? What's comfort for you, Jenny? Sit, okay, let me move my stuff.
Okay, well, you all got the report that we recommended on Lumber's Swim, Swim Racket issues. Here's a little substitute information to go around with them. I'm sorry, they're not copies, but you can pass it around. In the last few days before the season ended at Swim and Racket, there was a very big crack appeared in the wall at Swim Racket. And it was hung, supported at the base, but it peed out from the wall. Lots of chips of plaster that were in that section. This is a picture of it up here. This is another picture. The wall was at the, near the lifeguard stand as you entered the pool. Okay, so fortunately, we made it through the season, thank God. But this was a pretty big chunk, or something like that. And I assume it's still there. The other side, which also had another problem, this is the deep end, and there is a line, a dark line here, that's the crack happening in the deep end, right below the target area. So I thought you might like to see those. And we all know that Swim and Racket's plaster job, which was performed in 2010, was not the best. We've had problems with it every year. And every year, we have repaired it, and it has not made it through the season, basically. Had to deal again. Turtles, nice turtles, they like the turtles. Okay, that was covering. On the other side of this piece are the holes in the epoxy at, what's called. Now, there are presently four of those holes, and there's a dark spot under them, which means there's space under them, and I have not examined that. You should look at that. Those are all along the window wall where water collects. And if anybody is around here, remembers what we did to that pool, you know, to deal with the cement work that was along the wall, we replaced it with epoxy. It took us three times to get the job right, so it wasn't too slippery and people fall, but it never got leveled properly or pitched a drink. So I just was going to send that around for you to look at. Those are situations that are currently happening. Yeah. Lumber's Landing was supposed to be fixed this, this fall, this winter, or this spring, rather. And we then have gotten a, a new ADA entry, and we still do have that, works very well. But when it came time to deal with plaster on, the company that was doing it said that there was too many voids in it, and they could not guarantee they'd get it done in time. And Bob came and gave us support on that, and we decided as a committee that we just simply should repair what we had and consider this work as fault next year. So that's where we are with that. Meanwhile, Sports, Swim Racket is also having its problems, and since they are now, we suggested in our report that it might be a good idea to combine the work on Swim Racket and Lumber's, since they were both plaster issues in the main, there's some other issues there, to go ahead and see if we could get a better price, because we were bidding on two pool pairs, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of where we left it, and I'm just here to kind of reiterate that to you. Meanwhile, we have been working on Sports Core, and that is a combination effort on repairing the deck and repairing the pool itself. Plaster in Sports Core is in very good condition, considering that it is physically wearing wet, but there have been no points countered in that. It was the same surface that has been on the pool since before we covered it in 2007. So what you can see through the plaster now is yellow stains, which are the bond coat being exposed, and then, of course, actual concrete, which is where concrete has been more likely. And it's a pretty, but it needs care, needs some new stuff. So we are not completed with that report yet, but, and we have had people come in and look at the pool and give us suggestions, helpful suggestions. But what we have discovered is there's some products out there now that we could take the deck as it presently is and cover it with those products, and we don't have complete information on that. I certainly do visit, I want to see how these products work with, with slipperiness and other issues, and wear, and whatnot. But two of the products that we have heard about, we've seen some of, are one called Pep Tech, which is a thermo polymer compound. And that came to us by one of our gentlemen came in to look at our pool and give us some suggestions. He had seen the product on Maryland Capital Parks and Planning Pools in DC area, and he said that he was very impressed with it. He said, that looks good, and it's a product that you can mend, it's a product that can be traveled on. Any of you familiar with the deck at, at Sports Core know that these are things, these are issues for us. You don't have a level deck. You don't have a good edge, we do not have a coping edge on that. And now the call. I know. But the issue now, too, is once we do something to that deck, you're probably going to restrict it to require a beetle. So that's, we barely got away with one at Swim Racket. There's just about a big edge, but if we do anything to the deck at Sports Core, we're going to require to do that. One of our gentlemen has suggested a stainless steel gutter, rather than the place, pair, place the twelve swimmers that exist there. That's that the deck, the gutter will provide things. And we're consulting all this now to see. And this is an update for, well, we are working on it, and we had tentatively planned, I think, for next summer to repair Sports Core. And that's, of course, something to talk about, and I think it isn't budget, Bob, for Sports Core, but we don't have prices on it.
Is that a plan?
Eventually, I have done a report, and I want to comment that one of my committee members, Gary, has developed a book for us, which is very nice, which pool is pictured, which pool has all measurements, diagram. And I've written to various people to ask them to come look at our facilities. I've been able to send them pictures, pool. I've been able to send them the diagrams, been able to tell them exactly what they are going to see when they come, and therefore, what I want from them, in terms of advice. And all of this is strictly advice, is to give us ideas of what, give us an idea of what it might cost. It's not an RFP, it's not the actual, yeah. So that's just, Gary did a very nice job with this, so now we have this as a aid to send out. It really helps to see what you're trying to bid on, and we wanted people to come and look at the facility, because there's many, many, many points about Swim Racket, well, they're quite new. But to look at trying to repair a deck that has holes in it, and skimmers that have to be drilled out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is another issue. And anybody who thinks about bidding something needs to know, we need to know what to look at. So that basically is where I am, and I thought it was a good opportunity. Sharon asked me if I wanted to address the report, which is a good idea, see members' support, not to be too, to be, okay, if I work for you.
Yeah, I'm fairly old.
Well, I'm getting older by the day.
Matter of fact, I won't eat it, so now it's time to retire.
We're having a party.
Why, you're going to have a party. That's great.
Thank you very much, Jenny. Any, any.
So any questions that you have?
I'm wondering if Bob has any input on this, because I know he's been working on this, so.
My work doing Miss Jenny in the committee, we're aware of the issues. Maybe she's done a great job, like helping us identify possible solutions, just like, so it's, it is one of the groups that, I mean, we just worked, and from a project standpoint, if you all recall, part of the, Miss Jenny brought it up, part of the issue was, we started getting Lumber's pool, realized it had ground down to the base, not just, well, we're going to put the diamond right in the pool, so we decided to wait, do that later, just because there were two things, factors that came up. The contractor, when they came out, had bid on one price, but then wouldn't want to do it once they got into it, or.
Or voids and.
Yeah, so, so they decided, they came back with another bid, but we were, they were already in repair mode, putting in the zero entry. So we decided to wait at that point, so we'd bid out the pool again, taking it clear down to the base coat. So that's the process we're working on. At Swim and Racket, we've had ongoing problems there unnecessarily, for whatever reason, that plaster job just did great failing since shortly after. And we've done everything we could. Now, we did pledge to do repair work over at both, it's our intent, and we talked about timing of things. And one of the things, as I read many reports, one that we talked with the head of our public works, as well as head of, new head of aquatics, talked about when to get to the work, what to do. We're in agreement that the work needs to be done. Our timing is a little bit different, but Miss Jenny actually said, I mean, they have some flexibility as well. Our goal was to start in the spring for this reason only. We don't have budget for the pool covers this year. And we've agreed that moving forward with any pools that we redo, we want to get a pool cover. Found that the O'Club one, through a lot of steps, was the right thing to do, was to cover the pool. It worked out great first this season when we went to open it, the turnout to open it was very quick, and maintenance was so much nicer with power plant, safety, maintenance, the whole nine yards. So we think we're on a path there, and we agree, when I say we, I'm looking at Miss Jenny with Aquatics, if anything we do to the pools, if we refinish them, refurbish them, replace them, whatever it's going to be, we will do it, cut right behind. So our intent, when I say ours from the staff side, is to start, put an RFP out over the winter months, do, start the work in as early as March from the, basically, they had to strip the coating off the pool down to the base or the shell of the pool and start over with redoing it. That's the only way, at least the one contract, and we feel that's going to be the same with this Swim Racket, to get the actual warranty for the new diamond bright finish. So it's our intent to do that. They can start stripping pools down even prior to the warmer months coming. The key is to get the application, the diamond bright on in time. And we feel when we start the project sometime in March timeframe, we'll have plenty of time for it. In addition, we have, we haven't budgeted for pool covers, and that's one of the things we've identified for this year for both of those pools, in the budget process, as part of the request, is to ask for the covers. A couple of things by waiting to spring to do it. A, we don't have the pool set, even though they'll be done, and a pool cover will be put, they would be put on as a non-budget request. Secondly, if the pool is unused for six or seven months at that point, or six months, depending on when the work is accomplished, we'd rather have it open and usable right after the finish is done, so we can monitor it through the summer months, make sure there ain't conditions that we're concerned about buttoned up. We'd like to do that, and it also meets our budget requirement. So that's the only area where we have even a little.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
The committee has a different opinion. Our opinion is that we would like to start the work for the winter months, because we're concerned that if we, if we could do, or the project can begin, the grinding down of the plaster to the shell can begin in the winter. And that way, you then attach the bonding and the plaster in the spring. And you, the pool covers, you don't need till next year, because the pool won't be completed until the spring. But if we put the RFPs out now and do the grinding in the winter, and then in the spring they place the plaster, then we have more confidence that the pools will be ready by Labor Day, I'm sorry, Memorial Day. Where if we wait and start the whole project in the spring, I'm not sure they'll be ready. That's our, that's the, is, am I right? Is that the committee's concern?
It's one of the things we discussed, I was just about to mention that to Bob, to see if, talking about what that's a doing thing, what divides that way, well, not. I think it should, and it might be just a way to get that stuff out, because that makes a lot of trash. You are blasting off plaster, either sand blasting, you've got the sand, or you're water blasting, and going to do the RFP, and hence, we might then find out whether that is or not. Just a thought.
We certainly talk, and it's probably wise to talk to a lot of contractors, you have one thing about, once you strip it down with the conditions, you leave it open winter with a cold winter, a storm winter, whatever.
Well, you have to fill it back up at this part, you know.
And that's what we did, you know, what, what does that do additional?
Well, that's the reason why I said we should ask, and it might allow us to facilitate that, that gives you more time.
Let me make a comment, like zero. What's the busiest time of year for swim? And what's the least busy consequence?
Spring, that's why we.
I mean, right now is the time to make your buy, though, oh, we're at the cat's purr, see, if that's hard, ease up, because now is the time to do it. I mean, these people are sitting on their hands after they close these, looking for work. Next May, or April, they're not looking for work.
All right. Dave, may I say something?
I, I think we're all pretty much saying the same thing. I think Bob is under the concern of studying and getting an RFP. Don't, Mike, rep, that you're, this is what you're planning to do, you're planning to get an RFP done, once you analyze it with your team as to what needs to be done. And one of them is the research. Can you leave it open in the fall and do it in the spring? What does that do? Do you have to fill it, not fill it? There's a lot of elements that we don't have the answers for, Marty. So I think we all want to get the RFP, we want to vote on it, so we want to get this process, because I think we're totally in agreement with what John had to say. Nobody wants those with Memorial Day coming and not a pool open. So if we don't start now, it won't be done. So if, if there's an RFP done in a timely manner, after you've done your research and talked to your team as to what's been, come to us for our vote on it, and then we've got to go get the building permits and whatever timeframe the county's involved, and that is an unknown for me, I don't know what your timeframe might be. And then, we're dealing with, are we dealing with winter weather? I mean, I, I don't know what the timing is with the weather, but if we have the contract able to give it out, and able to start as soon as possible, it might be February 1st, it might be March 1st, it might be November 1st, I don't know. But I think that we, what the committee's wanting, and I think what you're saying, is you want to get this thing started with the process.
We've always said we were going to start this in the fall. Let me, Mr. Jenny, appreciate that. So putting an RFP out a week or two doesn't change, we still have some research to do. We just finished. to do, we just finished the summer season, we're rolling into fall, this is one of our, our areas that we realize we, we've, we've identified, it's in the budget, we'll get it done.
Actually, the mumfords landing pool is not... Not what? The mumfords landing pool is not in the budget.
Actually...
It is, it was already a budget.
It's not in the budget. I have copied the budget.
Okay, here's what, here's what I'm gonna tell you, we're, we're well aware of it, it's in thirteen, fourteen budget, so we found a larger amount of work needed done. We decided to wait, not spend that money, and do a carryover, we're well aware of that. So, he may be correct, it's not this year's budget, but the end of the last budget season, we didn't spend the money, because we recognized where work needed to be done, so we delayed spending the money till the fall of this year. So it was a budget item, we just delayed the expenditure, to make sure we're doing it right.
And, uh, since we already have a relationship, uh, hopefully, uh, with Bob, uh, they need us to do mumfords, that question, want to ask them about, uh, did they pay to, to do the pool in fall, throw it, and then start again, start the process of replacing the plaster in the spring, sufficient. This is, this is, this is...
Tom, you had a comment?
Yeah, I mean, it, it actually leads to the discussion we just had, it has to do with, but, one of the things that, that, uh, I believe we need to look at as an organization is the concept of grandfathering or escrowing budgetary dollars that are not expended within a fiscal year. Just as an example of Bob was just talking about, where it became a better decision, while it was in this year's budget, we'd already passed the budget for the next year, by the time that decision happened, past budgets in February, they don't take effect till forty-five days or more later. And at that, in that period of time, there was a change that, we, you know, let's not, let's not rush to spend the money when it's the wrong time to spend it. So organizationally, you know, Jack, I think we need to take a look at, what can we do operationally within our management of money to put together a grandfathering or an escrow process that allows money from this year's fiscal year that was not spent, quote unquote, it's money in the bank, that we got, but it needs to be spent in another fiscal year, and it happened after the budget was already passed for that next year. So that's the situation we're in. So that was why I was gonna ask you, where are we budgetarily, but you're jumping out of your skin.
It's not exactly where we are. It's because we don't, we budget this stuff, and we don't do it. There was no budget for mumfords landing pool last year. What we did last year was we took money from the sports corp pool that was budgeted, and put it toward the mumfords landing pool that wasn't budgeted. We did that February 22nd, and because of the late start, the pool didn't get done. Now, yes, it opened on time, but it wasn't done. The sports corp pool wasn't done. Now, we can keep opening our facilities till they collapse, the eye club, country club, or we can get this stuff off dead sooner and do it.
I don't think we're, anyone's in disagreement with...
Well, I don't know, we're not, we're sitting here, I'm just hearing about ten reasons why we ought to put it off until next spring.
No, that's not what we're saying, that's not what we're saying at all, Mark.
By the way, yeah, on your comment, I was about to express a better note, thank you. That's a long-standing issue, and we really need to get our answer to, and it's just, um, and it's been misused. You know, everybody's, when I say misused, that's not really a great word, I mean, because everybody's trying to, like, and get something done. Right. You know, it's always that motivation, but nonetheless, it's not, it's not a good, it's not good financial, it's not good. And in terms of this, okay, the next question I have is, is what, I mean, I think Bob's already told us what the action is. Okay, and, uh, you know, is that action, are we clear on what that action is, and is it satisfactory? I mean, we talked about moving on...
Just for the record, there is, sports, we got the sports corp pool in this budget, it's not gonna be addressed. I'm, I'm, I mean, I, it's anybody's can argue that, not getting to the sports corp before the end of this fiscal year. Am I right?
Yep.
Okay, there's, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, put it over here. We got a splash pad, we saved a hundred and thirty, we budgeted a hundred and seventy-five, by the time we built ramps and the splash pad, we have a hundred and thirty thousand additional dollars, over here. We've already budgeted forty-five thousand dollars, the only thing I did was budget for this one racket finish, that's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We can't do repairs to those two pools, cover them in diamond, diamond bright, buy new winter covers for them for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. My, money's there.
It doesn't make sense to do it this fall, cover a pool, you have warranty issue, it's gonna be covered nine, five, six months, you have a warranty on, you have so many years to work, cover, why would you put it in and have just said, "unused"? It doesn't make sense, get the warranty out of it, wait for the only need to do.
Well, I agree, it doesn't, but what you have to do then, if you don't buy the pool until it's finished, which won't be till next year, you start the work this year, and then you complete it next year.
No one's in disagreement.
Okay, I...
You're talking about next calendar year.
No, I'm talking, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about, let's get the RFPs out now, let's grind the...
We're going, here's what I can tell you from a staff perspective, the last the board redirects, we're going to, as we said months ago, it's gonna be a fall project for us, we're gonna do our research, we're gonna do our homework, we're gonna take what the advisory committee has provided to us, Miss Jenny's pointing out a couple of things we're gonna look at. There, we're not, there's no intent to delay the project, we identified it via budget, because we recognize it, it's done, we'll get done. Now, whether right in our, tomorrow, or we're right in two weeks or three weeks, is not relevant to making sure we do it right. Expediency does not mean we do it right. I can give you examples where when we try to rush things, it doesn't work out the way we hoped it would, so we're on target with this, I'll work with Miss Jenny, and we'll staff it properly. This, this one doesn't seem that hard, and I don't think we're too far off base.
I don't, I guess the thing I'm looking for, Bob, I don't, talking about getting the information, did, I don't know whether you're talking about Dave's...
It's gonna happen, probably in the next thirty days. We, we need to figure out, if you grind the pool down, can anyone here tell me, grinding down to its base coat? When you go to winterize it, you need to fill it completely, partially, not at all.
You have to get the information.
But that's what we're talking about, Miss Jenny said that, and we're going to talk about.
Well, the skimmers... Right now, we're September 3rd, uh, Saturday, September 3rd, how about getting us the information by Saturday, September, making that go?
Sure.
Okay. Next, next week in a meeting, and basically, we should know what's gonna be done, and what, and, uh, you know, we'll know, can we answer Jenny's questions, whether or not we can put in, uh, by splitting it up, and hopefully, that would be the case, can, I mean, it seems, you know, I don't know about pools either, but it's common sense to say that the more work that we can, uh, we should do now, because it increases, decreases the risk that something will happen, and we won't be able to do it in the spring, or, or we'll have to push it on, if, if, after the pool's...
I think we can answer that question. Kathy will have an answer for us.
Five to twenty, send.
Yes.
The next week.
The other thing is, uh, the sports corp is Mark Henderson of Spa, a practice one of ones that has a special covering called group rock, that'd be something for these sports corp deck, and, uh, he has one, a swim racket, and so, somebody can call on, because he was a bit poor, get the RFP, send that out, but, uh, the information is available, and you'll have to ask.
Jenny, kind of a selfish question, Mark.
There's swimwear, I understand.
About the sports corp pool, yeah, is that gonna be a long one with that, or, what do we...
See, what we were thinking about was the last three weeks of August, when other pools are still open, and then if you needed to extend past later than, then we'd be able to still have another open. Everybody wants the pools to stay open after later than. As a four-year aquatics director, I, I know all about this, sure, hope he's gonna part very quickly. Uh, but people will use it for the sunning, they might, may or may get water, kids come back to their parents' school if they, if they're open, uh, fall, and after about two weeks, it's gone, nobody wants to do it anymore. And we usually close about the third of September. Uh, it's available for that, you certainly can finish off anything that we need to do, uh, that timeframe. I did talk with, uh, Mark Henderson about his, uh, availability in later than, he probably fit.
My pocket?
Uh, listen, your wife should be interested.
Well, she would, she's...
Yes, I mean, understood that a person who's just, should be swimming, but Bob has spent a fair bit of time in the water himself, working on shoulders, it's all right. At any rate, that's, all of that, I think, is helpful.
Just one piece of information, you come back with it. Forgetting our magical fiscal year date, when the money is spent, when can you comfortably start working on an outdoor pool, so that cover can be put on and open the season, you know, it, it just, when is that? Is that, you don't know now, but at, at some point, are we talking March 1st, March 15th, the end of March, in this...
We're gonna do that homework.
And that, that's all I'm asking for, is when, you know, don't artificially have the work start based on some financial fiscal year deal, because we need to manage our way around that.
Well, the cover is not necessary until pool is closed for the season.
Right.
So if you're going to be constructing it, when finishing it, uh, spring and whatnot, we would not cover it until after it's, we're trained down.
Right, right, okay.
And that's not an issue.
Okay, so that's, it's, uh, made it to next calendar year.
Pool coverage would have to be, is your budget, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming.
It's coming. Okay, well, I think, just follow up on, on, on it. What we're looking for is something relatively specific, in other words, we want to know exactly, what it is being exposed, and, uh, and what the net result of that is, for, for budgets, uh, of course, it is important, but that's, that's not the driver, actually, and, anyway, can't believe this, forget the...
Yeah, I've marked that one down here. I'm just not important.
Write that one down! Okay, uh, thank you very much, and...
Well, thank you for listening.
Now, can I ask Sharon, this discussion and Bob's action supersede your motion?
I, I have no reason to submit the motion, I, this is all gonna be handled...
That's what I thought.
With the next meeting.
I, I may want to, that's wonderful, I mean, you know, I just went, I may want to submit that motion, because I made the motion to discuss, well, that, that, hey, if somebody's, oh, you still have another year later.
Well, there's nothing wrong with that, and it certainly...
No, there isn't, it's, it's making it very clear what the four months done.
Here's the question that I have, as we build a budget, we may stand by identifying this area, the board approves those budget items, recognizing, recognizing, we're working very well with the aquatics committee, and we have...
Well, very neat, very...
We have a good working relationship. What's the purpose of putting a motion to tell us what we're already doing? It's hard working down the path, right, working with the aquatic committee, we have several opportunities here, the delays on every project, on any of the projects we have, the board is made aware of them, and the rationale behind them, the committee's been supportive of, of our movement with the aquatic side, because we've worked hand in hand with them on that, so I'm not real sure of the purpose, the memo is also already identified, and we're already trying to do.
Perhaps, uh, to freshen, Sharon, I have a question, would you like to read the motion?
The aquatics committee has completed a recommendation for the mumfords and swim and racket club pool repairs. This motion is to request that the general manager work with his team to review the recommendations of this committee, and to arrange an RFP for the repair of these pools, including the addition of a customized cover for each pool once the repair work is done. The desire is the RFP requested as soon as feasible, to ensure that these pools are repaired and open in time for next summer season. Background is this committee has worked on this project for months to identify that what they think the issues are to bring these pools up to the best standards possible.
Well, I think you're close, Bill.
I would second.
Discussion then, Miss, Miss Ginny Reister has made a presentation, committee's findings to all board of directors, members of today's meeting. If the work is able to be completed this fall, the committee recommends that each pool be filled and winterized, and that the pool will have a customized pool cover installed. If the work is not completed this fall, then the committee recommends the pools are filled for the winter months to ensure that the pools will not float, no cover is needed until the work has been completed.
Ginny, I, I made a mistake, I tell, you want it corrected? Well, I know you, your subsequent statement correct that...
Oh, okay.
...uh, you know, uh, is done, so that's all I was saying, that, uh, you'll spend that month until next year.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Uh, you know, Bob mentions that we put it in a budget, because it's gonna get done. Sports corp pool is an example, has been in the last four years budget, not done. So putting it in the budget doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna get done.
Only put more money in, time to do it, so we...
Yeah, that's because, believe it or not, these things are aging, and if they're not maintained, you don't do these things. But if we wait long enough, we can build a new mandatory.
Well, I think, looking, looking at this motion, uh, there's several things, uh, you have to kind of look at it, well, they, uh, to arrange an RFP, well, in fact, the, the work that you're doing, uh, will in fact be arranging an RFP, getting all the necessary information, putting our, getting, and, uh, hopefully, you know, uh, fast enough. Uh, the repair is, including the addition of, of customized cover, I think, I mean, that's true, but I think what we're looking at is the time period under which each one of these things is done, because I'm not, you're not above it.
Right, I have an agreement.
So in other words, uh, what we're really looking at is that timeline, uh, that this is not, this is...
You, you've instructed him to have this information, this motion is so open-ended in so many areas, and by the 27th, we're open to answers to those open-ended, and the questions, so I think that the, you know, a motion would be more specific on the 27th than it would now. Now, it's just saying, go do what you said you were gonna do, and then get, get back to us.
I don't know, I agree that that's, I think we can table this one, uh, until the time is out, in this case, we would have, and to, to exact what, uh, Paul...
Well, the next aquatics meeting is the 24th this attempt.
Yes.
So perhaps at that time, you might have a little more information with the aquatics meeting, then I can prepare to present another motion if necessary.
Actually, no.
That being...
We're, the anticipation is for us to receive a different motion, you don't want to table this one, you simply want to vote this one down, and take the new motion that's got the detail in it faster.
I agree, but I agree.
Okay, so let's have a vote on that, a session, if there's no further discussion then, uh, all those, and favor the motion, all those against, but motions, uh, on, but there will be another one. It's coming back, okay. Thank you very much.
Can I go on that action list?
Uh, yes. I will indeed.
I, I would like to just publicly hate John Witzelberger, uh, John is talking to Tom Staus, but I do want you to hear this, John.
Break it up.
Uh, John has been a big volunteer in the Ocean Pines community, on the Budget and Finance Committee, and now Aquatics Committee, he is leaving us, moving to Florida, we want to thank you publicly, John, for all the good work you've done in Ocean Pines, thank you personally, and thank... for all the good work you've done in Ocean Pines. Thank you personally and thank you from the board. We're gonna miss you. Yes. You take a good minute.
Well, starting right off, then, what are the action items for resulting from this? Got it?
Uh, the action items, next one, the motion to adjourn.
That's the next one, again.
That's the next one, yes.
But do we have any action items resulting from this meeting? We do have one.
We have two. We actually have two. We have one, the information, right, you all looked at the action order. The information, the action order that we just discussed. Second one was a rewrite of the... Your information, this, this was recorded at the board meeting.
Yeah, any suggestion? I'm gonna rewrite it. Oh, we will vote online.
We have to vote with the calendar is gonna change.
No, I think we've accepted the calendar has changed, so...
But we'll get a new one.
We'll also adjourn, put that action item, update the calendar, update it with the dates that we've talked about.
With the correct dates instead of what we now have?
Stick with what you have now. Show up then. Right.
It's not something likely.
Tom, I'm sorry, but on the agenda, we left off media comments.
Thank you.
Before we get the media comments, David, as a liaison, I have something that I wanted to make the board aware of. At the last meeting at the county commission, I think last year sometime, I brought to the table that they had put out for bids, contract to replace water lines up and down Ocean Park. What happened was when they put out those bids, they didn't receive any back from anybody interested in doing the work because they were busy during the summer. So, what they are going to do, based on their action this past Tuesday, is put it out for bids again. And according to the director, John Tustin, he thinks that they'll get adequate bids for the work. That will be closed down sometime in the September, October timeframe. Decision made, brought back to commissioners, and they look to begin the work sometime in the October, November timeframe and make it a winter project. And I brought this back for Bob and the archives so that they can get an idea as to what the heck's going on.
Thank you.
Media comments.
Comments to media. Questions? Yeah, several. First, the meeting schedule, are work sessions part of the program now? Are they kind of polished? Essentially, one meeting a month? The last week of the monthly on Thursday or seven?
Right now, we have not scheduled work sessions.
There might be special meetings.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I would think so. As a matter of fact, there was a subject that was going to come out that I... We have in past, just to think about, we have in history, had work sessions that preceded a regular board. And I think, oh, you're, I really was gonna speak to some part of that. It's interesting. I've come back and looked at some that we had. In a way, it did. Now, the work sessions were good because everybody could say what they thought about it. And I think the people had it at times, it was real tight. Did they get a hand sometimes? Probably. The, but what did happen was, it was all session, board meeting, really. Fundamentally, had discussion, so... I would invite you to think about that. Hope this will back the... That's all I want to say.
Okay. Also, I think there is a consensus here that the financials would be posted online. Are we talking about a one-page summary or are part of mine a ten-page summary?
A moniker, a ten-page.
Before, okay, all right. Thought that's what we meant. And as, I'm understanding that all of the supporting information that the board would normally receive prior to a meeting within the three-day timeframe, all of that would be either made available to media, posted online?
As per, maybe the day of the case, but that'd be the latest, huh? And that's one of the things that this has to be written, you know, the word, as, words as track. What has to be served. Because there's sometimes, it's just not going to have the details. I would generally expect to have the administration, but on the other hand, something like Jenny. Do the best we can.
Fair enough.
That's the intent. May, I have a motion. Oh, you need the...
No, I'm done.
Please start. Go.
What constitutes three days?
Three days?
There's a Monday notice. When would you need three days' notice?
Three days, Saturday work day. And as far as I'm concerned, the board will send me their... But we have only Thursday to look at, so that's not really too relevant. It's supposed to be out of month. I can get stuff like this on Friday. I don't want to be that stuff. But if that's not the case here, I think the case is April, Thursday. I would assume three days' notice.
Yeah, last time my agenda is adjourned to closed session, the last six months or so, I guess. Jeff Nepper, board member, made motions to go to closed session and explaining as much details as possible now when any part, what the purposes of the closed session were. For example, he would say, if we're going to closed session, such and such about... Are you gonna continue?
Uh, yes. Kathy, can I put my...
I have a closed session. So, for contractual legal issue updates and extension of nineteen ninety-three franchise agreements and sand pipe...
With Tom's question with your financial thing, I'm staying. Get those Excel spreadsheets.
No, you get them hardcover.
No, I will. No, we will change things.
Hopefully, we put on a website. It will happen that way, so...
No, we'll scan it. We'll scan it to PDF for him and upload it.
Yeah, I guess that PDF will work. Yeah, okay, sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Actually...
Parliamentarily, you need to make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion. I'll go both ways. On the purpose of contractual legal issue updates specifically for the extension nineteen ninety-three franchise...
Second. All papers due, all right.
Break for closed session?